Ms. Speaker, I did confer with the author of the legislation in reference to my concern before we broke for lunch, and I'd like to just turn in my amendment to hopefully get the consensus with my colleagues to go to page nine and delete from line 11 section numbers three, four, and five.
On the Munia Barnes amendment, any senator wish to be heard? Any senator wish to be heard? I see the hand of Senator Duñez. Any other senators? Senator Duñez, you're recognized.
Thank you for the opportunity to arise on the amendment, Mr. Speaker. I certainly understand the intention and the perhaps goodwill of the mover of the amendment. I would just cite a concern that I have, Mr. Speaker, and that would be that in the event that this amendment should carry, it would take away the flexibility of the provision as it's currently in place of the may utilize resources amongst the executive branches for the purpose of accomplishing the overall mission, not only a bit, but just providing the technological services to, you know, the government. And it may actually end up making it where there's a forced position then from the executive to say, "Fine, I'll just consolidate everything under my power." Because there's not really flexibility here as it stands, and it would stand in terms of the way the language is currently placed. So why not allow for that flexibility? The whole purpose of this office when it's put into place is to have a single point of contact so that you're not trying to herd mice when you're trying to figure out why is it that certain entities get, you know, the attention when it comes to their technological needs, but others don't? Right now, if we go and we try to deal with DOA or pull somebody in, you know, it could be a lot of finger pointing going on and the like, but under this circumstance, we're holding one person accountable to answer for that organization. But you take away the flexibility, then, you know, then you're almost creating a situation whereby, fine, I'll have to use my executive authority to consolidate everything and say, "Here it is, plunk it down," and then it happens. And until another chief executive sits and rescinds that executive order, that's what happens, if that happens. So, Mr. Speaker, in that event, just because I think it's not correct to micromanage this process, in my opinion, so I rise in objection to that amendment, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much. Any other senators wish to be heard? Did you wish to close?
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I rise in support of the amendment, and with, just prior to going on break, we had spoken to the author of the bill, and I hope I'm not misquoting him, but he said it was fine with him. And if you look at it very carefully, is that, and what really kind of bothers me, and I'm glad by doing this, because it is such a powerful, I guess, duty of a specific office to be able to go in there and just overrule and supersede any decision that's going to be made by the administrators of any department or agency in the government of Guam. And earlier, I know, there was a discussion saying that the director basically has, so to speak, the final say-so, but this particular language does not say that. So that is very dangerous, I think, for any one office or any one person to just overrule and supersede any decision made by an administrator. For Part IV, where it draws upon the staff or other executive agencies for advice and consent of formulation, implementation, or administrative or operational plans, that means to go, and similar to Number Five, where the transfer of individuals and human resources and equipment from a department or agency is going to hurt a department primarily because, and an example was given by our former speaker, Senator Yamashita, mentioned because she has been working very closely with the libraries and only to find out that the IT guy has already been transferred. And you know as well as the other members here is that the library has, you know, not more than five individuals, and to take an IT who's critical to a library now to be able to be under this office or officer is going to definitely impede on the operations of a department or agency. And what's going to happen later on in terms of, yes, they may need equipment, yes, they're going to need resources and all that, but they'll be able to do all that because if you read further in the law, it does call for the allowance of submitting a budget and requesting for additional employees, and then there would be a charging of fees, so then those fees can be used for its operations. So I really think that this would be unnecessary to do that. So, and those are the reasons that, you know, I stand, of course, to support this amendment. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Any other senator wish to be heard on the Munia Barnes amendment? Senator Lim Tiaok, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I stand in objection to the amendment mainly because the fact that this bill attempts to establish exactly, or attempts to fix the problems that exist throughout all the agencies, different platforms, different computer systems, none of which talk to each other, and, you know, striking out three and five of the bill would basically continue that practice. And the whole bill, the whole intent of the bill is to make the IT systems more efficient. You want similar platforms, you want the networking capability, you want agencies to share data. You take that out, and you let the agencies basically run their own IT platforms, run their own software bases, they can't talk to each other, we'll never get to the point of efficiency in the IT systems of the government if you take that out. And if the main concern is that they're worried about jobs, I don't believe that that's true. In fact, this may even make those positions more important because you do need a resident expert in each of the agencies that knows the data sets, that knows how to match up those links between the systems. I don't see it affecting jobs in each of the individual agencies, I only see it fortifying it and making it even better for our government so those systems can talk to each other. So I object to the bill, I object to the amendment. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Lim Tiaok. Any other senator wish to be heard? Senator Siniklis?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I can appreciate the concerns that are raised by the author of the amendment. However, I rise also in opposition of the amendment for a lot of the reasons that were stated by the retiring speaker, who made a lot of very, very good points and talked about positions that I share as well. I think one of the biggest problems we have in this government from when it comes from an information technology standpoint is that we have too many individual systems throughout this government that are working within their own silos, and they're not all working together. And when I put this into perspective, I think of it like our Department of Education. We have a central office, and this central office coordinates all the schools throughout the island. Imagine if every single school was doing their own thing, and the central office was there trying to move it along and make it all talk to each other. We already see how challenging it is with a central office already in existence. DOE works very, very hard to stay on point, to develop their own mission, and to all work together to accomplish that mission. And critical to that is a central office that's able to unify the entire school system in pursuit of that mission. I believe that these provisions that the amendment seeks to remove will be the equivalent of removing central office from DOE. These provisions are the core to centralizing our information technology, they're the core to getting uniformity throughout our systems, they're the core to making sure that when I line up in one line to do something, I'm not going to be told to get in my car and go down to another agency and line up there first. Once we're able to unify our information technology, we're going to see so many improvements in government service, we're going to see so much savings versus us buying all these different systems and paying for them in piecemeal rather than as a unified purchase. We're going to see an increase in economic activity because people will be spending less time stuck in traffic, less time standing in line, and more time at their jobs actually producing something for benefit of this economy. So, Mr. Speaker, it's for those reasons that I rise in opposition of this amendment, and I just want to make something clear. I have a lot of respect for the concerns raised by the author of this amendment, and I believe that as senators with oversight over these agencies, we should be keeping a close watch on this. And if it looks like this system that we are idealizing and hoping is going to improve things is not improving things, then it's going to be our job to question it over and over and over again until it works the way we intend for it to work. And if it shows that it's just not going to work the way we intend, then it's also our responsibility to come back as lawmakers and proffer this amendment at that time or even repeal the entire bill altogether. But I think that we've crossed the line with the introduction of this bill to actually moving us in a direction of greater efficiency, greater centralization, and a better government for our people. So I rise in opposition to the amendment, Mr. Speaker. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Lim Tiaok. Senator Siniklis, did your hand go up? Mr. Senator McCready? No? Anybody else? If not, Senator Munia Barnes. There has been objection raised to the amendment proffered by the legislative secretary. We'll take a vote. All those in favor of the Munia Barnes amendment, please raise your right hand. The motion fails.
I voted twice. Did I vote twice?
I tried, but I couldn't get your vote.
Speaker, can we write it? Speaker, can we? On the main motion, is there anybody else that wishes to be heard? If not, I'll invite the sponsor of the bill to make the motion to move the bill to the voting pile.
I'm going to try to sit down. On the motion to send Bill Four to the voting pile, there being no objection? Hey, I'm going to do two resolutions in ten minutes, okay?
Mr. Majority Leader, you're recognized on motions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, notwithstanding the House rules, I move that we revert back to motion.
There being no objections. So ordered.
Mr. Speaker, my first motion is to place Resolution Number Four dash three-two as amended by the author, and it's relative to renewing Guam's call for justice with respect to war reparations and calling for action by the U.S. Congress on this issue and utilizing offsets such as the unpaid federal obligation for the impact of the compact of free association in order to appropriate such sums as may be necessary for this purpose and to address other concerns of the people of Guam. On the second reading file.
Any objection to the motion to place Resolution Number Four on the second reading file? No objection.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and colleagues. My next resolution is Resolution Eighty-seven dash three-two, and it's been introduced by the Committee on Rules, and it's relative to adding a new Part G to Rule Twenty of our standing rules to establish a drug-free workplace policy within the Guam Legislature. And I move that this be placed in the second reading file.
On the motion to place Resolution Eighty-seven in the second reading file, seeing no objection.
And, Mr. Speaker, my third motion is to place Bill Number Forty-four as amended by your committee, and it's an act relative to the authorizing the use of mileage earned through credit card purchase authorized by the governor of Guam and to support student travel involving academic, sports, and cultural activities. The version you reported out was amended, right?
Substituted. It's got a completely different name, but it'd be Forty-four as substituted by the committee.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
No objection.
And so on the, no, so we can go to the second reading file?
On the motion to go back to reading, second reading file, you're recognized. Mr. Majority Leader.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, my first Resolution Four dash three-two is I want to put forward this amended version, and I know that there's reservations with wanting this body to even be a part of what Congresswoman Bernalio was attempting to do when she introduced House Resolution Forty-four, which said, "Take Section Thirty funds, use it as a placeholder, identify those funds for purposes of an offset," and so that the issue of war reparations can move forward in the House. And she's told us, Mr. Speaker and colleagues, that it's not her intent to utilize these funds to pay the war reparations, but more so to use it for purely procedural purposes so that she can get through the rules of the House. And so she's hopeful that when the version passes the Senate, that she has the assurances and the commitment of the President that an alternative funding source will be identified to bring much-needed resolution and justice to our victims who have to endure the travesties of World War II and those who suffered under enemy occupation. And I know, Mr. Speaker, that you have raised a very legitimate issue, and it's something that we talked about publicly. We've said this over and over, and Ms. Beralio is aware, Mr. Speaker, that to now flag a funding source that possibly no member of Congress knows is going to Guam, it's sacrosanct and it's unheard of. But the Congresswoman has said that this is just something that needs to be done. And you recall that we had a video conference with her in her office, members of her D.C. staff, to include Mr. Alsteyman, who is a longtime veteran, high-ranking Senate official, as well as members of the House and Senate staffers from both the Republican and Democrat side. And so after that video conference, we had a follow-up meeting with her, and she said in private what she said in public, that it pains her to have to, one, identify Section Thirty funds as a placeholder, knowing very well, Mr. Speaker, that these monies are already due to the people of Guam. We get Section Thirty monies as a means of recognizing the kind of impact that this community receives, along with the benefit it receives by housing our military forces, there also some kind of impact that Section Thirty monies is used to mitigate those impacts. And we've even told Congresswoman Beralio, because she's of the opinion that this is monies that we should not have even calculated because these are monies that we would now be getting from these troops that are going to be on a rotational basis. But we told her that when this administration submitted their request to flow $343 million worth of bond money, they said that they were going to pay it by two funding sources. They were going to pay it by the increases in Section Thirty funds, which they've already pledged as a result of the increase in the military buildup. They've also said that they were going to pay for it with the increased revenues that this island was going to get with a China visa waiver. And we now know that the military buildup is not going to happen until 2020, and we know that the issue of the China visa waiver is still a matter that's pending before the United States Homeland Security Division. And so when Senator Tony Ada and I, Mr. Speaker, are minority leader, when we were in Washington, D.C., we used that as an opportunity to have these one-to-one meetings and to advise Mr. Stamen that asking us to take local monies to pay for a federal obligation is difficult in and of itself. And so we asked him to identify, to, we presented to him other issues to which he can identify and place into H.R. Forty-four, issues that reflect some of the ongoing longstanding historical injustices with respect to our current federal territorial relationship. And some of those issues, all of those issues, Mr. Speaker, are reflected in the amended version of Resolution Number Four. Specifically, we talked about the compact impact reimbursements. We talked about the $500 million that's still pending. We talked about Ms. Beralio's proposal, which has been a policy of this government, that we want to acquire Fena Navy's water and wastewater systems, which we refer to as Fena Lake. We talked about taking that $500 million or whatever amount they can agree to and quantify as monies that are owed to the people of Guam under the compact impact, and how that can be identified to be used for, for instance, such as the Medicaid program. We know that Guam was left out in the Medicaid matching grant, and that we were, the governor of Guam is required to provide a matching, the territories are required to provide a matching, and it's something that the states are not required to provide. And so, Mr. Speaker, we talked about using those compact impact payments to apply to the Medicaid issue. We talked about the issue of repatriating those citizens under the compact who violate the compact by getting in trouble while they're in the United States or in one of the U.S. territories. And the deportation of these citizens has been a growing concern. You raised this issue, Mr. Speaker, where you pointed out that this is costing the Department of Corrections about $8 million a year. And so one of the solutions could be to use some of the compact impact monies owed to the Federated States of Micronesia to build a federal prison in Micronesia. And so when we look at what Congresswoman Beralio is attempting to do in H.R. Forty-four, and we recognize that her outside-of-the-box forward thinking could very well be the silver bullet to addressing some of these issues, we think that it's quite possible, Mr. Speaker, that Congresswoman Beralio's idea in wanting to identify Section Thirty as a placeholder to get past those House, those very strict and stringent House rules that provide that the offsets have to come from the member's jurisdiction. You know, at the offset, this is something that was very hard to, for me, very hard to, easy to understand, very difficult to grasp because, again, you don't want to ever take local money and pay for a federal obligation. But I think after the public hearing we had, I think after having numerous meetings with Congresswoman Beralio and her staff, and having her gone on our public record to recognize that this is something that she's not going to do in terms of using it as an actual funding source, but to get through these stringent rules that then we can probably see some movement with respect to war reparations. And as we see movement with respect to war reparations, Mr. Speaker, our minority leader and I see some opportunity here to leverage some of these other issues alongside H.R. Forty-four and so that we can realize a win-win for our territory. And so when Senator Ada and I spoke with Mr. Stamen, and after, he seemed very amenable to recognizing the compact impact payables owed to the governor of Guam, to recognizing the possible use of these funds to provide for in-kind matching grant for some of the funds that we have to pay in order to get these federal grants, to use it for the Medicaid matching requirement, to use it as a solution to the amount of individuals that clog up our justice system, our criminal justice system, when their compact tells them that if they violate these laws that they have to be, they have to be sent home. And so we see this as an opportunity, Mr. Speaker, to present all of these options together with Ms. Beralio's H.R. Forty-four. We wrote to her to memorialize our meeting with Mr. Stamen, and we're very pleased with her response where she indicated to us that she's already started to work on those issues, and it's quite possible that the Senate might move for a bill, Omnibus Territories bill, that would encompass all of these concerns. And so when I was asked, "Why do we have to do the resolution now?", my response is, "Because there's some quick movement with Congresswoman Beralio's efforts, and we like to continue to put one Guam forward and have one voice in respect to how we address these federal territorial issues." And so I'm open for any questions that any of our colleagues maybe have, may have, but I want to say that once the idea of taking these compact impact payables, and once those ideas are recognized, and when we told Mr. Stamen that, "So this is kind of going to be like an auto check card where every time the governor of Guam has to pay something, they run that $500 million, they deduct it from the $500 million payable that they're recognizing," and he said, "Better than that, it's going to be like a gift card." And I said, "Then," and that's what it would be, and that's, then we'll give the local government, the legislature, an opportunity to treat this like an appropriation. So I imagine as a matter of policy, we would still have to introduce a bill that would appropriate against these offsets. And so the governor would still have to be involved, you would have to have the Congresswoman involved, and you would have all of us continue to work together to make sure that we get the much meaningful resolution to not only war reparations but also to these other issues. And so Resolution Four dash thirty-two as amended represents a very, very strategic approach to ensuring that our people, whether it's a World War II survivor or just our people who have to suffer under the hands of the ongoing federal territorial relationship and those challenges that bind us and prevent us from moving forward as a community, that this very well could be the solution to providing justice for all of us. And so I thank you for the opportunity to present this resolution, and I hope for unanimous consent so that we can send a very strong message to Washington, D.C., that this is something that we can carefully stand behind. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you. Any senator wish to be heard on Resolution Four as substituted by the author? Senator Siniklis? Any other senator? Senator Siniklis?
The author of the resolution's intent is something that I very much agree with. I believe that we need to make every effort possible to bring closure to the outstanding issue of war claims. However, Mr. Speaker, I rise in reservation of the resolution, and I do so because I don't want us to memorialize in this body the idea that using Section Thirty money to pay for our war claims is okay. In my heart and in my conscience, Mr. Speaker, it's not okay. And if our delegate in Congress needs to use that as a tactic to bring closure to this issue, then so be it. Let her use whatever tactic she needs to use. Let justice come for these survivors. But I think we go a step too far, Mr. Speaker, when we memorialize that idea as an official position of this body. And I believe that that's a step too far for two reasons. The first is I don't want Congress to come back to us 30 years later and wave this resolution in our face and ask us to accept using Section Thirty money for something else that they want to offset. It's one thing if it's a tactic being used by our delegate, they can't come back to us being used by our delegate. They can't come back to us and say, we said it was okay. By memorializing it in this resolution, Mr. Speaker, we're saying it's okay. And I don't think it's okay. And I don't want it to come back to us on something else in the future that we don't know about now, but may come. The second reason, Mr. Speaker, is that I believe that Section 30 money is more than just money to offset the impact of military personnel being here. Section 30 money is actually something that's provided to Guam as part of the Organic Act. In subsection 1421H of the Organic Act, it specifies that we get Section 30 money. And that is very significant, Mr. Speaker, because this Organic Act defines our relationship with the United States. And in this relationship with the United States, we don't have a vote in the Congress. We don't have a vote in the Senate. We cannot vote for president. And one of the biggest arguments to that being okay with our current political status is that we get all our federal income taxes back to us, and we get Section 30 money back to us. Once we start saying that it's okay to use Section 30 money for something else, we're basically saying that it's okay to take more federal money away from us for something else, and still refuse us the right to have a vote in Congress, and still refuse us the right to have a vote in the Senate, and still refuse us to have the right to have a vote for president, or to have an electoral college vote for president, if we want to get specific. And I don't believe that that's okay, Mr. Speaker. I'm concerned that in our quest for justice, we may be plea bargaining away our own people's money. And when we heard the testimony from the Congresswoman in the hearing that was referenced by the author, I spoke about my Nana, Francisca Borja Flores-Siniklas, who at the time was a survivor. And since that hearing, Mr. Speaker, I've lost my Nana. And my Nana, years ago, lost her eldest grandson, Major Henry Siniklas-Afashar, in the war, in the war in Afghanistan. So I'm very sensitive to the idea of war claims, but I'm even more sensitive to the idea that as we pursue a more perfect relationship with the United States, and in pursuit of that more perfect relationship, do so as patriots, I'm afraid that we are memorializing a precedent, that it's okay for us to have an imperfect relationship with the US, and take away the funding that is supposed to be offsetting that imperfect relationship as we continue to work on improving our status with the United States. So, Mr. Speaker, that is why I rise in reservation of this resolution. I want justice for our survivors and all claimants. I want a more perfect relationship with the United States. I want our delegate to be able to use whatever tactics is necessary, but I don't want us to memorialize that it's okay. And I don't want this to come back and haunt us in future generations. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Siniklas. Senator Winnie Barnes?
Sejuas Massey, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I really wasn't going to speak about this Resolution 4-32, as amended by the author, today. I was, I'm tired. I was hoping that this afternoon's session would run a little bit faster. And, and as I was hearing the amendments and the chronology of what the author of the resolution spoke about, I said to myself that I'm probably more amenable to supporting this resolution compared to the resolution that was first introduced. I did have my concerns regarding touching the money that was literally due to us anyway, for all that we've done. I probably can't speak as eloquent as the previous speaker, but I want to say that time may be running out. In 1941 to 1944, after the Americans, Uncle Sam remembered that we were still here, there was over 20,000 survivors. Every year, Mr. Speaker, you and I are reminded, when we do a memorial service, for those who suffered the atrocities of World War II, and for those who didn't survive, we are reminded every year. And as each day goes by, inclusive of today, Mr. Speaker, that great generation before us is probably down to even, not even 500. If I'm not mistaken, we're just probably down to several hundred. And you know, I'd be remiss if I didn't share in my concerns of where we needed to put a placeholder. But after careful consideration, after listening to all the points that were presented to us, I had to say, sometimes we have to make sacrifices, the way our elders, our parents, and our grandfathers had to make sacrifices. My dad was alive during the war. He's not alive today. My grandmother, who I talked about, who, when they were doing the reenactment here in 1976, was saying in Chamorro, on that reenactment, "Kill him in Punnu. Punnu. Punnu is Japanese." And believe it or not, Mr. Speaker, today, our number one economic driver is our Japanese visitors, because Guam is such a forgiving island. But are we going to continue to try and make things work to have a better relationship with Uncle Sam at the expense of our manamko? I don't know. I was told that if this resolution did not get the full complement of this August body, that there may be concerns with Uncle Sam, again, not adhering to what we really want for our World War II survivors. How many years ago has it been? Over 70 years ago, and we still don't have a resolution? And I'd be the first to tell you, who have, who have adopted brothers and sisters from Micronesia, living in my own house or my family's own house today, that sometimes you have to think of the greater picture, and it's not taking away from what has been afforded their way. Because, believe me, I've been raised with the values of respect, the values of hospitality, the values of giving, and giving, and giving, and giving. And when this resolution first came to play, I said, are we crazy? But after careful consideration, and after really working closely with the author of this resolution, and the support of the leadership in this, in this August body, I had to say to myself, I too have to jump on the bandwagon and make some sacrifices to try and see what could be afforded, to be able to give the little, the littlest amount for those who continue to live today. We are the only, the only country, the only island that has not been repaid for the atrocities that were done to us. Oh, I'm sorry, I take that back. Not to me, but to my mother, to my father, to my grandparents, to my uncles, and my aunties. And let me tell you, just not too long ago, I saw one of our former speakers who was walking in the maan. He said, he was walking as a part of an exercise with his spouse, and it felt really good. But as he continued to walk, he said, you know, life is precious, and time is short. And if I want to make a difference, Mr. Speaker, I'm going to have to be able to look, get creative, work with whoever I can work with, because, believe you me, I know that's a wrong English grammar, but let me tell you, Uncle Sam always summarily dismisses who we are as American, United States citizens, believe it. And I'm not afraid to say that. But I will continue to have respect. I will continue to work with what's given to me. But I will continue to advocate for what our elders deserve, that rightfully belongs to them. Is every single one of them going to die before they're given what's rightfully due to them? Even if this is given to them, even if a little part is given to them, it will never be enough. Everybody else has had their reparations. Our island has not. And I'm just going to ask this August body, this 32nd Guam Legislature, to able, to, to think, to at least have an open mind, and to have a unified voice, and to work with our non-voting delegate, yes, I say, non-voting delegate, to at least try to see what we can do to get what is due to our manamko. Those who suffered the atrocities, who are still alive today during World War II. Mr. Speaker, I do stand in support of this resolution. As amended by the author, I want to thank him and the Speaker, and of course yourself, for taking the leadership in pushing this forward. It ain't an easy resolution to work with, but I do know that we have to be able to stay on the same table and show the leadership and move forward, so that our elders may be given what they rightfully deserve. Signamassai.
Thank you, Senator Winnie Barnes. Any other senator wish to be heard? If not, I'll invite the author to close.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I certainly appreciate the comments of both previous speakers, and recognizing what's really at stake here, what's really at stake for our World War II survivors and their families that have to, that had to suffer under enemy occupation. I also want to recognize these previous speakers that talked about what's at stake, really, with, with using Section 30 funds to compensate our World War II survivors. And if you recall, when we first introduced this resolution, we respectfully requested the Congresswoman Bernalio to come forward and explain the genesis of her idea, and to explain to us her plan, and to, to, as to why she chose to go this route. If you recall, the resolution we had originally introduced made it emphatically and perfectly clear, Mr. Speaker, that the use of Section 30 funds to compensate our World War II survivors does not amount to justice. And so when we did that resolution, and Congresswoman, thankfully, she was gracious enough, and she was on island at the time, she attended our public hearing. She opened up the hearing by saying that that was the first time in her entire five consecutive terms, in her entire 10 years as a member of Congress, where she came before a legislature in a public hearing-type setting to explain why she wants to go this route with HR 44. She explained, Mr. Speaker, that, given the rules of the House, we know, that at one point, she was told, Ms. Bernalio, you want to pay for war reparations, you identify an offset. You identify an offset from funds that are already going through your jurisdiction. And so she, we've heard her say publicly that she wants to do this to see, number one, whether or not the Congress is true to their word, that they would recognize our World War II survivors and provide just compensation, Mr. Speaker, they, that they would provide some form of compensation, rather, because you could never fully compensate for those whose lives were, were lost as a result of the war. But she's told us over and over that she wants to put closure to the war reparations issue that was first attempted by our Speaker's father in Congress, Congressman Wampad. And then Mr. Blas, Congressman Blas, tried to do this, Mr. Speaker. Congressman Underwood tried to do this. And now Congresswoman Bernalio has tried to do this over the last 10 years. So when they challenged her to identify an offset, the only offset that she could recognize was Section 30 funds. And so she also said, Mr. Speaker, that she has received assurances and commitment from this president, that he will pay for war reparations if he can get a bill out of the House and Senate. And so this is what we were told. This is what we were told in a very public setting, that the use of Section 30 funds is only for purposes of a placeholder. And when Senator Tony Ada and I were in Washington DC, and we met with Mr. Stamen, I told him that, just to give you an example, give him an example of, of what this idea means to us, we were at a Chinese event, and we happened to be in line to get our food, Senator Ada and I, and Congresswoman Bernalio and her assistant, Mr. John Witt, came up to us and said, hey, can we get in the line? It's long. And so right away, I said, you're welcome to join us, but since you're just a placeholder, you cannot eat. And that's, and then that's the analogy, that this, it's just a placeholder, and so Section 30 funds is going to be recognized as a placeholder. She gets her bill through the House. She gets her bill through the Senate. And she assures us that Section 30 funds will not be the funding source to pay for war reparations. By the same time, she's wanting to go this route, Mr. Speaker, we are presenting an opportunity to this body to say that along with HR 44, that you recognize the monies owed to us by way of the Compact Impact. It's almost about $500 million. We had a former colleague who also ran for Congress, Senator Blas, who, who made this the plank of his entire service while he was in the legislature. And so unless there's a way to recognize how these federal territorial issues can be resolved, without having Congress put out the real cash, it's not going to happen. And so this approach that we're presenting, Mr. Speaker, is creative, in that there are certain federal grants that we get that requires a local match, whether it's a cash match or an in-kind match. In order to get those federal funds, we have to provide some kind of match. Well, if that's money that's going to have to come out of the government of Guam, then certainly we can use that $500 million balance and draw down from that balance to get these federal funds. With Medicaid, as I said, there's a matching requirement from the territories, that they have to provide a certain match in order to get 100% reimbursement. Now, you've said this over and over, you've been very public about this, is why the territories were left out and not treated the same way the states were treated. And so in this proposal, we're asking that we are allowed to use that $500 million payable to the government of Guam, and use that money to draw down on the Medicaid match. And so if we have that Medicaid program at 100% funding level, we can include more people into our health insurance, get them the much-needed health insurance care that they, that they require. Mr. Speaker, there's the issue of repatriating those who are in violations of the Compact. And let me make it very clear, that Guam has always welcomed individuals from wherever they came from, whether they've come from Micronesia, whether they come from Asia, whether they come from the United States, wherever anyone has come to our island and has made it very known that they want to be part of our community, they want to be educated in our school system, they want to go get health care from our health insurance system, they want to protect, be protected by- want to protect, be protected by our own law enforcement system. Those are the kinds of individuals that come here and they become productive members of our society, and certainly we welcome them. But the compact impact provides that for those that migrate to Guam under the compact, that we would be reimbursed for the health, for the impact to our health, education, and public safety. We haven't been reimbursed to the tune of about $500 million. And so here's an opportunity to say, "Well, you owe us $500 million and you don't have the real cash, but since I'm gonna have to be taking money out of my government to pay for some of these federal requirements, let's just do a journal voucher and do a drawdown." And then so on the issue of the repatriation, repatriating citizens of Micronesia, Mr. Stamen has said again that there's $10 million in the CIPs coming out of the monies that are going to FSM, that Congress can direct that a federal prison be built in Micronesia, or Congress can direct, direct that that monies be used to, to pay for those who are incarcerated, maybe in the CNMI if they're willing. And so that's, that's a very creative way that Senator Ada and I presented and talked to Mr. Stamen about. And so we're hoping, Mr. Speaker, that this amended version can get unanimous consent so we can begin to speak with one voice to tell our Congresswoman that we're supporting you for procedural purpose, purposes, and if you can get these other issues through by way of an Omnibus Territories Act, we certainly think it'll be a, not only a victory for our manomko that have, that have had to wait, but also to our people of Guam who have had to suffer as a result of these unfunded federal mandates. And I just leave you with this one thought. When we introduced the resolution that said using Section 30 funds to pay for war reparations is not equate to justice, we've heard from our Road War II survivors that said, "Does it really matter where the money comes from? Does it really matter?" And so I leave you with that thought and I, I leave you with the lasting understanding and the indelible mark that was made in my mind that the use of Section 30 funds, period, is unconscionable. It's unfortunate, as the Congresswoman admitted to us at our public hearing, but it's the only thing that she has right now to, to use, it's the only card that she can play in order to keep the whole issue of war reparations alive. And so, Mr. Speaker, we don't join the Congresswoman in this effort. I think the message will be clear, regardless of what our position is, I think the message will be really clear, that we passed up on an opportunity to assist our Congresswoman in trying to move the issue of war reparations forward. And so I recognize that the decision before us is really tough. And again, I'm appealing to every single member of this legislature to recognize the opportunities that we have, the challenges that we have to face, but more importantly, how important it is for us to provide unanimous consent to our Congresswoman so that she can take this message with her as she moves this issue forward. And so I thank you for the opportunity to present on Resolution 4 as amended, and I moved that Senator Tony Ada be added as a cosponsor, and I, as well as Senator Tina Rose Munya Barnes. And I'll do what Senator Morrison did. Anybody else? You're already, you're already there.
You need me? I'll be here.
And Senator Chris Duennius and Senator Brant McCready and Senator Morrison and, and Senator Antioch. My only reservation was because I was waiting for an answer, not because I didn't want him. So certainly, Mr. Speaker, whoever would want to be a part of this resolution will certainly be a part of this resolution and this effort to try to keep the issues of war reparations alive, as well as the issues of trying to provide that silver bullet to resolving all of these federal territorial issues. And so I thank you for the opportunity and I renew the motion to add our colleagues as cosponsors, the ones I mentioned. And Senator Frank Uggan Jr., I don't know if this amended version will get his support.
Yeah, but I added some.
Okay, Mr. Speaker.
On the amendment, here in objection. On the motion to place it in the voting file, no objections. You recognize, Mr. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that Resolution Number 87-32 be placed in the voting file with just a brief explanation.
On that motion, here in objection.
Mr. Speaker, this resolution was introduced by the Committee on Rules, and it represents the work that our exec director has done in conjunction with our legal counsel to provide for a drug-free workplace here at the legislature. And the most prudent and intelligent thing that we can do, Mr. Speaker, is to adopt what the judiciary has adopted when they moved to establish a drug-free workplace policy. And so I provided this resolution to require that the attachment, which is a drug-free workplace policy, be added as a new chapter to our standing rules. And so I passed out this proposal for colleagues' consideration. But the most important message is that we've taken a policy that was vetted and adopted by the judiciary and we're emulating that here for our branch of government.
Thank you. Any other senator wish to be heard on Resolution 87? Senator Tom Ada?
Mr. Speaker, thank you. I, well, of course, I rise in support of having a drug-free workplace policy. And I noticed, though, that in the policy, the prohibitions have to do primarily with, for example, illegal use, possession, dispensation, distribution, or selling of controlled substances by an employee at the worksite during normal work hours or while the employee is on duty, official legislative business, or whatever. So, and then as we go through the other provisions, everything refers to if a drug-related activity occurs here at the worksite, then that's prohibited. But it's silent on, on basically what happens outside of the legislation. I don't know, I, from a legal standpoint, can we, can we say that, can we say that if, if, if one gets convicted for drug activities off-site, would that be basic, you know, basis for dismissal from here? It doesn't say that here. There, there is in paragraph D on page, I guess, Part III of the policy, it says, "An employee who is convicted of violating any criminal, criminal drug or alcohol statute in such workplace situations, as stated above, will be subject to appropriate action." So I'm just kind of puzzled by the fact that, you know, I mean, if it's, if it doesn't happen here on the legislative grounds, then, then we'll just turn away from it. So I, I don't know if, maybe somebody can clarify that for me. The other, so...
Can I get that, can I ask Majority Leader if he'd yield to that inquiry?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Speaker. I yield to the question. The, the policy that we're trying to implement, again, is mirrored after the courts. And what the courts have is that at any time there's a violation of the workplace policy because of illegal use, possession, or dispensation, or distribution, or manufacturing, or selling of controlled substances, if it's found on the worksite, then that's grounds for drug testing and it's grounds for further disciplinary action. The court's policy is silent with respect to what the previous speaker has raised. But as he pointed out on subsection D, it does cover any criminal drug or alcohol-related conviction, so...
In the worksite.
Yeah. At the worksite, during working, normal hours, or while on duty, official business, or standby.
Does that address your concerns?
So the current has to happen at the legislature or in one of the senatorial offices?
Well, at least it's on record then that actually this drug-free policy really only has to do with whatever takes place on legislative grounds. And whatever happens out there, that's, that's a totally different matter, and, and so it does not affect that employee here. The...
You had a second question. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, but I thought you should get the answer on that first inquiry.
Oh, no, 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 that's fine, that's fine. I noticed that, of course, in Article 6, Drug and Alcohol Screening Program, and here it outlines seven different types of drug and alcohol testing. One, of course, is pre-employment, just a random test. But we talk about a random test, but we don't, we don't, you know, there's nothing in here that says how frequently this random test, testing will, will occur. And again, it's just, I guess, I could wake up one day and decide, "Got a bad hair day here, so we're gonna conduct a random test for drugs," or are we gonna require that there will be at least two random tests annually or once annually? So maybe if we could address that.
Mr. Chairman, Chairman DeRosa, would you like to yield to that inquiry?
Yeah, the, on Section 6, Mr. Speaker, the Drug and Alcohol Screening Program, there are seven instances where these drug testing, drug or alcohol testings will occur. And the Senator's right, it's not very specific to how many times random testings will occur. But I'm sure upon the adoption of this drug-free workplace policy, the exec director is going to have to establish these policies so that the employees are aware of, of exactly what kind of drug testing policy we have here.
I'll take a few minutes, I'll take a short recess so you can discuss this with legal counsel.[1334.73]
Then they're certainly welcome to do that, but it should be done at the expense of the employee. So, you know, if you feel like there's a need to vindicate yourself to some rumors, and rumors are always going to be abound, then, you know, you have to do it at your expense. So, I would, my emotion then is to, on line seven, to add the words voluntary testing at the expense, at the expense of the employee.
Any objection? Any senator wish to be heard on that amendment? Anything further, Senator Ada?
Just, just a couple more items, Mr. Speaker, and that's on the, on the resolution itself. And I would just like to suggest on page one, line 10, where it reads, "The legislative process in producing important bills, resolutions, and policy", to just delete "producing important bills, resolutions, and policy", and replace it with "formulating public policy".
On that amendment?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. And on line 12, where it reads, "Whereas all legislative employees have a responsible expectation", I think that word should be replaced by the word reasonable expectation.
On that amendment? Anything further, Senator Ada? No. Any other senator wish to be heard on the resolution? Senator Uggan, then Senator McCready. Oh, I think Senator McCready had his hand up. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I would like to possibly proffer an amendment to the, to the resolution, and I had a few questions. First, one of my questions were that how would we go about as a body, or if there is anything in place through this resolution, to then rehire someone? Would they be eligible to be rehired after a, in a period of time away from the legislature? Would we consider that? And if we did, what type of drugs would they have to be qualified for under
...........................
if they did test positive to be able to be eligible to be rehired again?
.....................
Does the sponsor wish to yield to that question? Does the sponsor wish to yield to that question?
I guess this, yes, this question would be to the, to the author. I guess this, yes, this question would be to the, to the author. If they wanted to get rehired. If they wanted to get rehired.
I'll take a few minutes. I'll take a few minutes.
... The legislature's back in session. Senator McCready, you still have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I would like to proffer an amendment. And, uh, the amendment is to read line 14, page one, where is Illes Liturenguan is a zero-tolerance branch of government with regards to illegal drug use.
Okay, on the amendment?
No objection.
No objections, so ordered. Anyone else who would like to speak on the, Senator Uggan, you recognize?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I certainly stand in support of the, the resolution as well as the drug-free, promoting and advocating for a drug-free work environment for all of our employees and all of our colleagues. I just have one concern that was brought up by a previous speaker, Madam Speaker, about whether, in fact, this would only be applicable in the workplace. I know that when you enforce and carry out the provisions in a drug-free workplace policy, you can enforce what takes place within a work environment. But I think that when it comes to anyone that has gone through the judicial system and is convicted, I think that that's a different scenario where, in fact, there really has to be an obligation on the part of the employee or individual to report back to the administrator. So, Madam Speaker, if I can ask you to revert to page three of the policy, subsection D, which, which reads, "Employees are required to notify the administrative director within five working days of any criminal, drug, or alcohol-related conviction", and it goes on to read, "where such conviction was due to an occurrence at the worksite, during normal work hours, or while on duty, official business, or standby duty." I think that anyone who has a conviction, rightfully, the employer should be immediately be, immediately be notified. So, I would like to move for that particular sub-statement, Madam Speaker, to just read all the way to the word conviction. So, it would just read, "Employees are required to notify the administrative director within five working days of any criminal, drug, or alcohol-related conviction", and then the rest of that particular sentence would be deleted. And then, obviously, worksite requirements still apply in other portions of this particular policy. So, it would not take away from that. It's just that if anyone goes through the judicial process and is actually convicted of any criminal activity or illegal drug use, then rightfully so, the employer should immediately be notified. And I think that that would be consistent with the transparency aspect of what this body has always tried to expound on. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
On the amendment, then, to, to delete... We're going to take a brief recess.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, and I want to thank our legal counsel, as well as the two senators and the executive director for contributing to the discussions on the sideline. I think the intent is to ensure that the employer is notified of any conviction, but to not take away the opportunity to identify and to apply disciplinary action in the workplace. So, Madam Speaker, if I can rescind my amendment in exchange for the following language, or actually, let me rephrase that if I may.
I was going to say.
Okay. "After the work conviction, period." But to take the words, "Where such conviction was due to an occurrence at the worksite during normal working hours or while on duty, official business, or standby duty," and insert that in sub-item A, right after the word statute. Insert that entire phrase right after the word statute and delete "In such workplace situations as stated above." So, Madam Speaker, that would read, starting from the top, "Employees are required to notify the administrative director within five working days of any criminal, drug, or alcohol-related conviction, period." Subsection A would read, "An employee who is convicted of violating any criminal drug or alcohol statute where such convictions -- conviction was due to an occurrence at the worksite during normal working hours or while on duty, official business, or standby duty will be subject to appropriate action in accordance with Illes Letourne Guahan's standing rules." So, Madam Speaker, if that's okay. I understand that it's not written, and it will be written very shortly, but that is the proposed amendment, please.
On the amendment, does everybody understand exactly what the senator is proposing? Hearing no objections, so order.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, and thank you to our colleagues. And once again, I stand in full support of the proposed drug-free workplace, zero-tolerance, drug-free workplace legislation. Thank you very much.
On the main motion, is there anyone here who would like to speak? Senator Especho then to close.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I certainly want to thank all of our colleagues for their substantive amendments to this proposed drug-free workplace policy. I also want to thank our executive director, who has been working on this policy since the beginning of this term, as well as the legal counsel who provided the much-needed legal guidance. You know, Madam Speaker, when we talk of drug-free workplace policies, we have to be very mindful of local and federal statutes. And one of our colleagues asked, "Why are we limiting this to the worksite?" Was, as we know, federal law requires that if you're doing drug-free workplace policies, that it involves the worksite and that it involves the desire to create for a safe working environment for all of the employees. It's not a policy designed to provide a safe working environment for the drug abuser. It's really a policy designed to make sure that that institution, in our case, our legislature, provides a safe, working, drug-free environment for all of the employees here. And all of, as a result, all of our employees will have to undergo drug testing under the seven instances that we've identified. And so, I thank you also, Madam Speaker, for your very public call for this legislature to move in this particular direction. And I especially thank you and the vice speaker for your leadership in this area. And I ask our colleagues to do the same, to follow suit and to adopt this resolution so we can begin to have this policy solidified and memorialized in our own standing rules. And thank you, Madam Speaker, again, for the opportunity and for everyone's collective involvement to making this policy much, much better as originally presented.
You're welcome. Senators, on the motion to send Resolution 87-32 to the third reading file without any objections, so order. All we have is one bill which we will place on the agenda for tomorrow's discussion, that's Bill 44-32. So, we will recess until tomorrow morning at 9:00 a.m.